Beginning in March, the U.S. Census Bureau will invite households across the country to participate in the 2020 Census. But what is the Census? Simply put, the Census is a headcount of every person living in the United States. To be sure the government represents the people, the U.S. Constitution requires a population count every 10 years. Ever since 1790, the Census has determined the number of seats each state receives in the U.S. House of Representatives. It is and always has been a cornerstone of our democracy. We still use it to determine representation, but leaders also use the data to make decisions. Your response helps guide planning for the future of our communities. The 2020 Census will help inform decisions on how billions of dollars are allocated annually for critical public services like roads, schools, hospitals and healthcare clinics, fire and emergency response services, and hundreds of other programs. In 2020, for the first time, you'll be able to complete the Census online, by phone or by mail. It asks a few simple questions, like how many people live in your home on April 1st, including their age and sex, and if there are any children living there. You should know that by law, all Census responses are completely confidential, and your personal information cannot be shared with any law enforcement agencies. Every person counts, no matter who you are or where you live. So whether your family has participated for decades, or the 2020 Census will be your first, we all have a role in shaping the future of our country.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court meetings. Commissioners' Court meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse, located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily. The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The locations of the county facilities are the following: the Road and Bridge Fabinz Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabinz Street in Fabinz, Texas, 798-38; the Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse, located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 798-35; and the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 799-38. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice-of-the-peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: be a veteran or a current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court meetings. Commissioners' Court meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse, located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, February 24, 2020. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by Pam Ferrone?
The United States of America, and two republics which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May God bless America.
Please be seated.
Judge, Commissioners, county officials, and leaders, once again, it's really a privilege to be here. Thank you. Please join me, as I pray, if you would like to. Almighty God, we come boldly before your throne today, seeking your presence in this honorable chamber. Please give each one deliberating here wisdom that is from above, which is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, willing to yield, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy. We ask that you preserve the health of their bodies and touch all who need physical healing. Keep their minds clear and sharp. Let life's cares, concerns, and burdens be lifted off their shoulders as they take care of the business of the people of El Paso County. Where there is weariness, give rest. Where there is weakness, give strength. Where there is discouragement, encourage them. We pray for divine protection for all first responders serving in El Paso County. Let your angelic hosts go before them, and Lord, we declare that you are their rear guards. You've got their back. Bless all who are being honored today. We confidently trust in your goodness and mercy all the days of our lives. In the precious name of your Son, Jesus, amen, and so be it.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferrone. Always a pleasure to have you here. Well, welcome, on behalf of the Commissioners, myself, welcome to Commissioners' Court. We have such great people here today. I'd like to make notice of Estela Casas in her new role, and we're very always pleased to have her in any role here in El Paso, so thank you. And thank you for being part of our local government. It's always a pleasure to have you here with us and try to understand what needs to happen in our community, so thank you very much for participating. Caesar?
Item number four is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 4A through 4V. There are two items we need to address corrections to. Item 4D, for the county attorney's office, should read, pursuant to the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Article 102.0171, authorize the county attorney to provide educational materials for students for the remaining account balances of its former teen court program, designed to prevent juveniles from engaging in delinquent conduct. Funding is available in special revenue, teen court cash. And also, for item number 4P, for the Facilities Maintenance Department, we'd like to announce a correction. 4P should read, postpone from February 10, 2020. Approve and authorize the modification renovation of space on the eighth floor of the courthouse for additional work and storage space for County Court at Law Number Five, in the amount of $759.26. Funding is available in CIP 19, Public Works Renovations. Are there any other items that members of the Court of the Public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioner Robinson?
4B for Commissioner Robinson. What was that, Commissioner Stow?
N?
N? Your motion?
Yeah. Move to approve.
Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Item number 5A from Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the El Paso County Sheriff's Warrants Section and other law enforcement agencies in their work for Operation Safe Streets.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. It is my honor and privilege to be able to read this into the record. I know we have several people from the law enforcement side, both within the city and the county. If you all can approach the podium, and I will read the resolution into the record. Thank you all for being here this morning. Whereas Operation Safe Streets was conducted by the El Paso Sheriff's Warrants Section, and whereas Operation Safe Streets cleared 786 active warrants, resulting in the arrest of 716 people, bringing them back into the criminal justice system to have their day in court; and whereas Operation Safe Streets resulted in 87 people surrendering themselves at satellite booking, freeing up valuable resources; and whereas Operation Safe Streets coordinated with many outside law enforcement agencies and other community partners; and whereas Operation Safe Streets brought closure to crime victims by resolving criminal cases; and whereas Operation Safe Streets provided a safer community for the citizens of El Paso, Texas. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Commissioners' Court on this 24th day of February 2020, that the El Paso County Sheriff's Warrants Section is recognized for outstanding work for the citizens of El Paso County for Operation Safe Streets. Signed this 24th day of February 2020.
Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I've got to say that before you all speak, that there was a tremendous amount of money that was recovered, and I had a conversation with somebody saying, yeah, these people owe the county a lot of money, but it wasn't, it's not the county that they owe money to, it's El Paso's taxpayers, our citizens. There's many, many people that are given fines, and they pay it, they pay their fines on time, take care of business, but it's those others that cost us much more money to find them and bring them to justice. So, on behalf of Commissioners' Court, great job, and thank you for being out there and providing this type of service, that I understand now that people are even calling now, trying to resolve their warrants. So, on behalf of the Court, thank you very much. Great job. The podium is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Ray Duke. I'm with the District Attorney's Office, and it is my pleasure to be here today to further this resolution before the Court. You know, back in 2017, Ms. Lachuga and I got together. She wanted to clear some cases off of the court calendars in the various courts, so we got together and started talking about doing a roundup. I'd shared my past experiences with some previous roundups, and she proposed doing something a little bit different, which I think has been a great benefit, and that is to advertise the local, the upcoming roundups. So we did that. We ended up getting a team together, and that team consisted initially of Chris Acosta and Leslie Antunias from the Sheriff's Office. They take care of the media matters. Veronica Gonzalez from Court Administration, along with Amy Lachuga, and of course Sergeant Graziano from the Warrants Section. So we all got together, we met several times, we came up with a plan for press conferences, radio advertising, TV interviews, to publicize the upcoming roundup, and the availability of satellite booking. A publication date for the names of the newspaper, and of course, the actual roundup dates. and of course, the actual roundup dates. We then made contact with other law enforcement partners to include local, state, and federal, and some private partners as well. And this morning, I did see Sergeant Sombrono from the Police Department. So thank you, Sergeant Sombrono. You know, without our local partners, we couldn't do this job. We really couldn't. We had help from local, state, and federal law enforcement partners. We've had some private partners as well. So my hat's off to them, because they really helped us out a lot in this case. All these partnerships were vital to the success of this operation. You know, frankly, on the administrative side, we had it really easy. The hard work came from the Warrants Section in this case. This office compiled a list of warrants. They researched the warrants for the latest address information. They requested assistance from the Fusion Center. They put together thousands of warrant packets. They arranged them by zip code. They put together an operation plan. They conducted a briefing with all of the law enforcement partners. They put on a bulletproof vest and a pair of good running shoes. And as Sergeant Graziano knows, those running shoes do come in handy time to time. Of course, along with a good radio, so they could help, you know, get backup. They arrested offenders. They verified and pulled the warrants to have them ready for booking. They transported these offenders, and they booked them into jail. I just want to congratulate and thank both the staff and the deputies for all the great success and hard work for the past three years. They did all of this and so much more. They cleared cases. They brought closure to victims and made El Paso a better place to live. I still call on Sergeant Graziano to this day and his deputies to find offenders that have not shown up for court. An answer is always yes, and we will do it. This section's can-do attitude is keeping with the Sheriff's Office motto, "We serve with pride." Congratulations to everyone in the Warrants Section on a job well done.
Sir Duke, thank you so much. Amy, Scott, Tom Beck there, and the collaboration. You know, we keep saying, this is one of the best communities. And this collaboration, I'm sure, showed that evidence that we are a great community. But you know, we're, economic development is very important for El Paso. We're at that point that that's going to keep us going in the right direction. And being a safe city is one of the most important things that we can offer to anybody coming to El Paso. The first thing they ask is, you know, what kind of a city do you have? And when we say that we're one of the safest cities in the country, we're, you know, we already have gained a lot of traction and favor in them, considering El Paso. Same thing with tourism. We can't get tourism in here. They don't feel they're in a safe city. So I thank you for that and that collaboration and helping us to have that amazing community that we all know and have, and that we keep this safe city status going from here forward. So thank you every much, very much for you and your families also that allow for, for you guys to go out there and do what you do. Would you like to?
Judge, good morning. Commissioners, good morning. Commander, thanks for being here. Thanks, Ray. Yeah, I would just like to add, on behalf of the operation, the logistical part of it, running that, I'd like to thank all of the team. It's a combined effort. Like Mr. Duke said, it was everybody's involvement that made this a success. But to me, the true success was like what you said, Judge, right now, was the matter of three years and how many people we've taken into custody, not just during the warrant roundup, but for the citizens of El Paso. It should be noted that in those three years of the operation, along with all the other arrests, we've managed to do this safely, without any offenders being injured and without any officers being injured. I think that's the true success. And so with that said, thank you, Judge. Thanks, Commissioners, and thanks, Mr. Duke, for all the efforts that everybody's put in and for your support that you've given us in the Warrants and Fugitive Section to be able to do our job. So I much appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the kindness. Thank you.
Hey, Caesar? Item number 5B. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the month of February 2020 as El Paso Children's Hospital Birthday Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I have the honor of reading this resolution into the record. We have a bunch of folks here representing the Children's Hospital. Of course, the lady who's the meta meta over there right now is Ms. Cindy Stout. No relation to me, even though I tell people, I wish, I wish she was, you know, related to me. Or I wish I were related to her.
You say she is.
Yeah. But anyway, thank you all very much for joining us. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, and then we can hear from you. Whereas, when El Paso Children's Hospital first opened its doors, it quickly became a landmark institution for El Paso and the surrounding communities, as it was the first not-for-profit freestanding children's hospital in the greater El Paso area. Over the past eight years, El Paso Children's Hospital has become rooted in the community, changing children's health care for the better. And whereas, over the past eight years, El Paso Children's Hospital has recruited several physicians, including a pediatric neurosurgeon, a pediatric pulmonologist, a pediatric surgeon, and several pediatric hospitalists and intensivists. And whereas, some of the great achievements for the hospital include launching an outpatient cranial and facial clinic, achieving Level 4 NICU designation, establishing Zachary Bowling Pediatric Outpatient Diabetes Education Services, the reintroduction of the therapeutic arts program, designed to provide rehabilitation through art and holistic healing through art therapy, and being the only Children's Miracle Network affiliated hospital. And whereas, before the hospital's inception, nearly 650 pediatric patients a year had to leave the area for treatment. And whereas, the hospital has been able to reduce the number of children leaving the area by more than 85% and has served more than 125,000 unique patients. And whereas, after celebrating eight years in El Paso, the hospital's mantra, "This is our hospital," rings true as Children's expands care for kids across the region. Now therefore be it resolved, the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court, that February 2020 be known as El Paso Children's Hospital Birthday Month. Signed this 24th day of February, 2020, the Honorable County Commissioners' Court.
Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Stout. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for always being very supportive of the children within our county. I think back to prior to the eight years that our hospital has been in existence now. And I've been in health care for many years here within El Paso. El Paso is my home. This is where I grew up. And I remember community pediatricians advocating for over 25 years that a city of our size needed a dedicated children's hospital. We deserve that for the children and for the generations to come. And so the decision that you all made to support the Children's Hospital has been very instrumental in us helping to keep children right here at home so that they can receive the highest level of care. We estimate that we've been able to treat over 110,000 unique children within our community. And we've been able to decrease the number of children who would leave the community for care, going to maybe Houston, San Antonio, or Dallas, by close to 85%. That's phenomenal. That's the story that we should be telling everybody, is that that is what our community deserves. We're too big a city to not have these level of resources for our children. I would like to introduce you to a couple of our board members who've been very instrumental during the transition as well. Mika Short, and then Amy Ross. Sorry, Amy. I'd also like to introduce you to Estela Casas. She is our new Foundation Executive Director. And then, of course, nothing is ever achieved without having a strong team. A leader knows that. It's the people that you surround yourself with that really help you to get the job done. And so I want to make sure that I call out John Runkles, our Chief Operating Officer, Renee Thompson, our Chief Nursing Officer, Kelly Vannister, our Manager for Imaging Services, and Alexandra Valenzuela, who's always over here, but is extremely present and always supportive of everything that we do at the hospital. I'd also like to introduce you all to a family that we have had the privilege of taking care of, Desiree and Edar Gallardo and their son Liam. We will ask him to say a few words in just a moment. And then, of course, also, our Cranial Facial Surgeons Medical Director, Dr. David Yates, and Dr. Weston Santi. So I'd like to ask Dr. Yates to step up just to share a few words with you all.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you so much for this honor. It's such a pleasure being here. And I'm a cleft and cranial facial surgeon and the Medical Director of the Cranial and Facial Surgery Clinic. And they asked me to share just briefly what we've been able to accomplish in the last few years. So it's exciting. When I came here, a lot of patients were being transferred to San Antonio, Dallas, Phoenix, all for complex care. And a lot of these patients did not have resources to do this and to have these follow-ups. And it was a huge burden on actually a significant number of families in the El Paso area. But we have, we have been able, with the help of really an entire team, to create something unique and special at El Paso Children's Hospital. We now, instead of, instead of shipping patients out for care, we have had, just this year, patients come from Saudi Arabia, Palestine, Jordan, all over the United States to receive care at our Cranial and Facial Surgery Clinic at El Paso Children's Hospital. We have one of eight fellowships in the country. Dr. Santi is our current fellow that is training the next generation of providers to be able to provide this complex care to patients. And we are the standard for cranial and facial surgery care in the country. And it's a very special thing to be a part of this, and it really has taken the entire team. And it's such an honor to treat many of these patients. And one of our patients, Liam, is here today. And I think his mother, Desiree, wanted to say a couple words, too.
Sure, absolutely.
I apologize about the background noise. My son has been producing all morning. I just wanted to share a few words about the Children's Hospital and what they've done for our family. When my son was born, they told us that he had Pierre Robben Syndrome, which, or sequence, rather, which has now developed into what we think was more of just isolated cleft palate. At the time, I didn't know much about the condition. You know, we dived into Google and groups and, you know, just trying to find out what it is exactly my son had. And through that discovery and through groups that I joined, I realized that we were actually really blessed. There were so many families sharing their stories about how they were having to travel for the care of their children. And I'm talking hours, not just a 40-minute drive or 30-minute drive like we have to do. So it became very apparent that we were very blessed to have this care within our city for my son. And not only just care, but the highest level of care for our son. So he had a surgery back in November, and he stayed at the Children's Hospital. And I can honestly say that our family is beyond grateful to have this available for our son within our city.
Thank you. Thank you for seeing that.
Commissioners?
I may real quickly. I forgot one of our smallest, but our strongest individual over here. Laurel Houston serves as our Chief Legal Officer, and she's doing a phenomenal job for us.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the support.
Commissioners?
And I just wanted to thank you all for the work that you've done over the years. I know that the Children's Hospital went through some tumultuous times in the past. And, and we're all happy that, that things were being, were able to work out the way that they did. And, and, you know, I, I know that Dr. Stout doesn't like to, to take a lot of credit. And the board that's currently there, including Mika and Mrs. Ross, and the other members of the board that, that really have shepherded the institution out of the tumultuous time that it was in. And, you know, we wrote an op-ed a couple, a couple of weeks ago, I think a month ago or two, just kind of highlighting the fact that Children's Hospital is now in the black. It's the first time that it's been in the black. They're making money. You know, relationships within the community and with the pediatricians have been repaired. And people, and now we're talking about having to grow, having to put more beds. And, and that's, that's a, that's a great thing. That means that more people in this community can be served and will have, and, and won't have to go, as you all say, to Dallas or Houston or, or Phoenix or anywhere else. And, you know, it's, it's an amazing job. It's an amazing job. And I really thank you all for everything that you do. It's obvious the impact that you're having on families here. And, and just thank you. Thank you so much.
Cindy, you have an incredible team. And, you know, years back, it was heart-wrenching to know that so many families had to leave El Paso. I think that, having said that, is probably the most important thing. As you were in the, you know, in the red, to me, it didn't matter just to know that these families were staying here, that you were taking care of them. And then having the caliber of doctors that you have, a little youthful. I mean, my goodness. I thought he was going to say, we have an intern today that will be speaking to us. But I thank you. And the team is just amazing. Just so proud. You're the star on that mountain. And I think of that, I think of the Children's Hospital and what it does to so many families. And, and I think there's now a deep appreciation from the community overall. It's no longer, when I get approached, it's not about money. It's not about, it's just about the wonderful things that are taking place, the type of care, the quality of physicians that are there. I know we're going to be, you know, nationally recognized and will be a role model for a lot of communities to understand the importance of striving for a children's hospital like the ones that we have here in El Paso. And thank you, each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Item number six is public comment. We have one speaker this morning to join us. We have Mr. Pierre Andre Uzarraga.
Good morning.
Good morning, Pierre.
Past few weeks, I've been, you know, speaking to El Paso County Republicans, El Paso County Democrats. The county, you know, is divided. The state is divided. State reps, and I've been speaking to everyone. There's no, you know, they direct me to their constituents. El Paso, for instance, the Board of Plex Alliance, which is a local, an organization made up of local businessmen and women. And when I go speak to them, they're always telling me, well, we can't do this. We can't do that. And this comes from Democrats and Republicans. I mean, it's the same story. So, I mean, I sit down and I think about it, and I realize, you know, there's no American millionaires. There's no American businesses. There's no American billionaires. There's no American corporations. There's no American- The formal formulation of America's one and only political party would constitutionalize the American electoral process. Therefore, we secure and protect America's electoral process. The constitutional strategy that I wish to propose is a complete sale and purchase of my compensational interests, as well as a complete sale and purchase of my office interests in the American Political Party Committee to the FEC. Moreover, I want the FEC to address the details of my bonus." Again, this is particularly moreover. The following details is this: From September 10th, ladies and gentlemen, to September 10th, 2013, to September 10th, 2020, I've been putting in 80 hours a week...
30 seconds.
...for every year. That's $416,000 that I'm requesting at $100 an hour. I know I'm running out of time, but this is the way we come together. I need to sell my interest in the American Political Party to the FEC. The FEC should come in, compensate me in total $2.496 million, which I'm asking tax-free. I'm also asking a buyout of a lump sum of $1.331 million, which I'll be taxed on. But my bonus, I would like to gain full custody of my daughter, Riley Monique Viescas Ilzarraga. I want the FEC to take care of my legal dockets, and more importantly, I want my daughter back. If I can sell these interests, ladies and gentlemen, we constitutionalize ourselves. I step out of the way, I would ask the FEC and the American people to fully fund my presidential campaign in closing, so that we can get in there and address the issues that address all of us. Because in closing, to continue democratic debates and watching President Trump and Nancy on television, it's just, we're living as sinners. So...
Thank you, Pierre.
...abide by God's laws, Your Honor, let's sell my interests. I'm going to leave here, my paperwork with the County of El Paso, so that the FEC knows the details, and I'll be reaching out to them soon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
This brings us back to the items that were taken from the consent agenda for discussion. Item number 4B. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the services agreement with the Alliance for Regional Military Support to promote growth in the regional defense and aerospace industries. Funding in the amount of $20,000 is available in General Fund, General Administrative, Contract Services, General, contract number 20200098.
Yes, sir. I actually have this item pulled, just to give it a little airtime, I guess you might say, to stress the importance of the military to our community. Economically, we're talking well over $25 billion in our economy. And if you take out that $25 billion, where would El Paso, El Paso County be? But also, from a strategic standpoint, that we have Fort Bliss here, Fort Bliss is a premier installation, and there are a lot of people that have worked on this effort to make sure that we keep Fort Bliss in our community. I'd like to call on my friend, fellow veteran, Mr. Richard Dehu, if you'll comment in regards to this. We worked together during the time when he was at the chamber in Arizona City Council, is going to Austin advocating for Fort Bliss, as well as the listening sessions that the Department of Defense and Department of Army held here in El Paso in that regard. Richard?
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I will tell you that, to underscore what Commissioner Robinson just stated, the importance of Fort Bliss. I want to underscore another point, it's not just Fort Bliss. Fort Bliss is the largest footprint in the Army's domestic locations across the country. It is Fort Bliss in conjunction with White Sands Missile Range and with Holloman Air Force Base in southern New Mexico, Alamogordo, that make us the asset to the Army and to national defense that we are. And the purpose behind this initiative is to bring together all three installations and the communities that support those installations towards a common goal of advocating for our installations, making sure that our facilities are well-cared-for, that we get the funding that we need to improve upon them. And just this morning, Stephen Elsesser, who works for David Stoudt, came over to me to ask me for some information, which I'm sending him, with regard to your trip to DC next week in advocacy for our installation as well. So our efforts are truly collaborative. We have secured commitments from Otero County and from Alamogordo, the city of Alamogordo, Las Cruces. We are getting ready to pen our agreement with the city of Las Cruces, thanks to Mayor Ken Miyagashima. We have the Horizon City Economic Development Corporation as our partner, and of course, the city, who is the principal partner, the city of El Paso, in this relationship. So we are thrilled to have the county participate in this process. But it is an ongoing process that we need to work on, and to be clear, part of that work involves, and part of the funding that you're providing us, is to support the contract we have with the same public policy consulting firm that we worked with during the 2005 BRAC, the Base Relignment and Closure, which is Cypress International, who have been, while they, in my view, their knowledge, their expertise, and their guidance were instrumental to us in the growth that we saw with our installations. So we want to continue that effort with them as well. Mr. Dehu?
Happy to answer any questions? Just want to comment that, I want to thank you personally because of all the keeping it at the forefront, the military, the importance of it, and that is so, I'm not sure the community has fully understood, you know, what can happen if we didn't have the military presence. But definitely you and your team do a great job of, you know, letting us know and sort of encouraging us to participate. And so thank you for the invitations that I get to remind me that I should be very active, and thank you for keeping that going forward.
You're welcome. Thank you. By the way, apologies, the rest of our executive committee could not be here. We have Gus, who is our new civilian aide of the Secretary of the Army.
Yes, sir.
As in DC right now. John Bailey, Lance Lehrer, both out of the city, and Tom Thomas is recovering from some surgery. So my apologies on their behalf for not being here with us.
You don't understand, there's a very important meeting on the 10th, I believe, of March. I got from Gus this morning on a visit, and I think we're on strategic planning. Is that the 10th? We're in strategic planning, so I'm hoping that...
Sir, you're referring to the trip to Washington.
Actually, someone coming here to El Paso...
Oh, okay, we have four-star general.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, sir. He's General Funk, who is a former commander of the Three Corps out of Colleen Fort Hood, will be visiting us. He oversees all training and doctrine for the Army, so an important role, and he will be visiting us on the 10th, yes, sir.
Could you include him, Betsy, in our strategic planning as a participant? Or find some space for us to be able to participate? But, Mr. Dehu, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Move to approve?
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Have another item you wanted?
I don't think so. I think that's the only item. We can move to the regular agenda.
This brings us to item number seven from board appointments. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the El Paso Bar Association's nominee, Milad Farah, to the El Paso Ethics Commission for the term ending January 31st, 2022.
Judge, Commissioners, as you know, we have five outside entities that nominate an individual to serve on the Ethics Commission during even years. This year, the nominee from the El Paso Bar Association is Mr. Milad Farah. He's in the audience today and available if you all have any questions. But we'd ask that you consider this nomination for appointment to the Ethics Commission.
Mr. Farah, you want to come in?
How are you this morning?
Real good, and thank you.
I just wanted to thank you all for considering me. I've been appointed by the El Paso Bar Association to serve on the El Paso County Ethics Commission, and I look forward to serving our community with your permission.
And we look forward to your service. Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Item number eight, purchasing. Postponed February 10th, 2020. Approve and authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for an events and feasibility study for existing county coliseum and new amphitheater in accordance with Local Government Code 262.030. The purchasing agent has reviewed use of the request for proposal process.
Deborah Correjo-Troll, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, if you approve the use of the RFP, you are simply approving me when the specifications are completed by the department to continue with the advertisement process. This is a requirement of statute, and it's really a housekeeping item that we will bring before you anytime there is the use of the request for proposal process on anything other than high technology or insurance.
Deborah, could you expand why RFP for this kind of project?
Seal bids are generally used when we have a defined need, either goods or services. So a sealed bid, when you can compare price, you can compare minimum qualifications. Then the county, as we expand and we do more complex projects, we often run into awards where a sealed bid would not be adequate because there are so many more issues other than pricing to consider. The state of Texas allows the use of the request for proposal process as an alternative to the sealed bid, which means that we can consider any factors the department or the county at large deems relevant to the award. And this, Commissioner Robinson, when you ask about best value, this is the way the county's allowed to use best value, but there are some very specific requirements for it. One is, it needs to be solution-based, and it needs to be very complex. We wouldn't want to take easy things and put them into RFPs because that could look like a manipulation of the process. So in this case, with an events and venue feasibility study, you're looking at a very complex set of factors that will have to be evaluated by multiple people with a lot of experience.
Commissioner Perez?
I mean, along those lines, as my staff and I were discussing this item, I mean, would it make more sense to have an RFQ versus an RFP? You know, that way, it would give us the opportunity to evaluate or look at firms that have expertise in this area. Because I know a lot of the ideas that we've discussed, and we've discussed them extensively during strategic planning, you know, regarding the potential for like things like an amphitheater, you know, evaluating how the county coliseum is going to, you know, fit in the future for entertainment purposes. You know, but rather than going out for a specific proposal for these items, I mean, wouldn't it make more sense to go looking for a firm that has the expertise that can help guide us through this process? So in FY 2021, one of the existing vacancies, which we, we, we are, in this environment, we are having challenges filling these vacancies anyway. We will need to freeze it to come, to, to compensate for this position. And so I wanted it to be clear, part of the record, that we will do that in order to fund this program.
Thank you, Betsy.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners. Bill Cox, your interim chief public defender. In fact, our intention, because the way this program works, the successful candidate's law school funds the stipend for an entire year, and we would be asking the county to just provide a supplement to go up to the level of an entry-level attorney. We would not fill that position until the end of the one-year period anyway. So we will have more than enough salary savings without even considering the freeze. We don't have a concern about the freeze. But one issue I wanted to bring the court's attention is the law school partnership program gives us the ability to get a national reach on candidates coming into our office. Because the law schools themselves are paying a stipend for a full year to the successful graduates, we're in essence interviewing the cream of the crop from law schools across the country. We'll be coming back in probably the next month or six weeks with an MOU for this year's candidate, who is a graduate from the University of Michigan at Ann Arbor's Law School Program. She was highly recruited by other public defender's offices across the country. And not only was she our first selection, but also we were her first selection among the offices she had to choose from.
That's excellent. Commissioner Sinney?
Okay. Yep, okay. I'll move to approve.
Second. Bill, thank you.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Have another item you wanted?
I don't think so. I think that's the, the only item. We can move to the regular agenda.
This brings us to item number seven from board appointments. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the El Paso Bar Association's nominee, Milad Farah, to the El Paso Ethics Commission for the term ending January 31st, 2022.
Judge, commissioners, as you know, we have five outside entities that nominate an individual to serve on the Ethics Commission during even years. This year, the nominee from the El Paso Bar Association is Mr. Milad Farah. He's in the audience today and available if you all have any questions. But we'd ask that you consider this nomination for appointment to the Ethics Commission.
Mr. Farah, you want to come in?
How are you this morning?
Real good, and thank you.
I just wanted to thank you all for considering me. I've been appointed by the El Paso Bar Association to serve on the El Paso County Ethics Commission, and I look forward to serving our community with, with your permission.
And we look forward to your service. Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Best of luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Item number eight, purchasing. Postponed February 10th, 2020. Approved and authorized the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for an events and feasibility study for existing county coliseum and new amphitheater in accordance with local government code 262.030. The purchasing agent has reviewed use of the request for proposal process.
Deborah Correjo Troll County Purchasing Agent. In this case, if you approve the use of the RFP, you are simply approving me when the specifications are completed by the department to continue with the advertisement process. This is a requirement of statute, and it's really a housekeeping item that we will bring before you anytime there is the use of the request for proposal process on anything other than high technology or insurance.
Deborah, could you, could you expand why RFP for this kind of project?
Sure. Sealed bids are generally used when we have a defined need, either goods or services. So a sealed bid, when you can compare price, you can compare minimum qualifications. Then the county, as we expand and we do more complex projects, we often run into awards where a sealed bid would not be adequate because there are so many more issues other than pricing to consider. The state of Texas allows the use of the request for proposal process as an alternative to the sealed bid, which means that we can consider any factors the department or the county at large deems relevant to the award. And this, Commissioner Robinson, when you ask about best value, this is the way the county's allowed to use best value, but there are some very specific requirements for it. One is, it needs to be solution-based, and it needs to be very complex. We wouldn't want to take easy things and put them into RFPs because that could look like a manipulation of the process. So in this case, with an events and fees, and events and venue feasibility study, you're looking at a very complex set of factors that will have to be evaluated by multiple people with a lot of experience.
Commissioner Perez?
I mean, along those lines, as, as my staff and I were discussing this item, I mean, would it make more sense to have an RFQ versus an RFP? You know, that way, it would give us the opportunity to evaluate or, or look at firms that have expertise in this area. Because I, I know a lot of the ideas that we've, we've discussed, and we've discussed them extensively during strategic planning, you know, regarding the potential for like things like an amphitheater, you know, evaluating how the county coliseum is going to, you know, fit in, in the future for entertainment purposes. You know, but, but rather than going out for, for a specific proposal for these items, I mean, wouldn't it make more sense to, to go looking for a firm that, that has the, the expertise that can help guide us through this process and, and what to look for? I just want to be sure that, I mean, these are all very important projects that, that, you know, I just want to be sure that we get this right.
Actually, that, that would be, in, in this case, we're not dealing with any type of law like 2254, which would, which would require the use of the RFQ process, the request for qualifications, whereby qualifications is the basis for award. Price cannot be deemed the basis for award. You're not dealing with any type of firm that's specifically called out by 2254. But you could really do this as qualifications if you wanted, although an RFQ, when it's not being specified by law, is really just an RFP for qualifications. The county has approved the use of a very strict request for qualifications process. The, the upside of an RFP is, you see, all pricing comparatively, it's one of many factors. The evaluation criteria and the things you ask for in the specifications themselves could lead you to get qualified firms. You're not just asking for anybody. With the RFQ process, we do, to keep it in line with what's required by 2254 and to make sure that no one can come back and saying the county is using price as an evaluative factor in an RFQ, we actually do a sealed process where the pricing is separate and only the most qualified vendors' pricing is open, and then it is evaluated down. But you don't get, that, that's the trade-off. You don't get the option of seeing all the pricing against one another. So would I have a problem with this being changed to an RFQ? I would not personally. It's just not a required use of the RFQ process. But it looks like the way the specifications are laid out, that you may already be getting the most qualified firms coming in on this just by virtue of how the specs are written. If you were to tell me you wanted an RFQ, it, it probably wouldn't bother me to do an RFQ. Happy to do it.
It just, I mean, there, there are architects that are, I think, that are applying for this and.
Yes, but it's not a requirement that those architects are chosen. If we were seeking architects, then we would definitely be under 2254, and the strictest process would come in. So I'm, I'm happy to move it to an RFQ. It wouldn't be a required RFQ. We're really, to me, we're talking semantics at this point, and it's just, how do you want to see your pricing at the end?
Betsy, any comments on that?
So I've done, I went through an RFQ recently, and the, basically, the difference is, as Deborah was explaining, so right now, with an RFP, I can see, like, say there's two vendors that are really close in qualifications. They both seem to be very experienced, they both have done market and feasibility studies, they've done, built or made recommendations on amphitheaters previously, made recommendations on whether the market could support something like an amphitheater. And if I have both of them with an RFP, I can see what they both priced doing the work at. With an RFQ, I can't. They're separated in a sealed envelope, and only when I tell Deborah, I want to go with vendor A, then she opens up the envelope, and I never even see vendor B's price. So if there was a, a significant, say, you know, $100,000 price difference between the two, I would never know that. So that's, so it's how much do we want to let pricing be considered in this, in this RFP or this purchasing process would be the difference between an RFP and an RFQ. And on the RFP, we, I mean, if there are certain absolute requirements that are needed to, to do this work, that we definitely want to see from the proposals, we can, we can add those in.
Commissioner Perez, how do you feel?
Okay. I mean, I hear, I see what you're saying. I just, you know, I was just a little concerned that, that we're already kind of, you know, whereas price is becoming more of a determining factor versus the qualifications. And I hear what you're saying, that, you know, it gives us the option to, to look at that. But again, just given the, the complexity of what we're, you know, about to undertake, you know, I just want to be sure that, that, that the, that the highest qualified, or, or the firm that has the most experience, you know, be selected for this. And, and that's the thing, is I, I just don't know if we're at the stage where, where price for considering the, the projects, where they are in conceptually, and, and what we've discussed in strategic planning is, is something that we're, where we're at. I think we need a firm that's, that's going to help us through that process. But I mean, if you, if you think, you know, that we're able to get that, you know, and not go through, through an RFQ process, you know.
And what we can do, Commissioner, is, and I'll double-check this myself, is I can look at the point value being placed on qualifications versus the point value being placed on pricing, and we can adjust accordingly, where pricing is not nearly as significant as qualifications and experience and ability to do the work. The RFP. But it still gives you the ability, if there is a significant difference in pricing and like qualifications, to evaluate that as well.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Is that satisfactory?
Well, that, and I, I'll make sure I look at that.
Move to approve?
And with that, we just got to be sure there's not a lot of change orders, you know, in, in that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I have a question. Commissioner Robinson?
For clarity, specifically, what is the intent? What is the location? And what is the timeframe that we're looking at?
So as far as, okay, what the intent is, is to look at, to evaluate the market for the current coliseum operations. What, what can we do to evaluating what we could do possibly as far as modernization to either make it more viable, whether or not it is viable, and what could be done to make it even a more viable venue? The second part of the study is, is there a market here for an amphitheater? And if so, recommendations on where to locate that venue? Whether it would be on the parking lot of the existing coliseum, whether it'd be near the lake at Iscariot, or whether there's some other recommendation of where would be a best location for that type of venue?
And the timeframe we're looking at?
I don't recall the specs timeframe. I'm, I'm sure one of the questions we'd be asking the vendor is to give us a proposed timeframe on how long it would take to conduct the studies.
And we didn't specify a cost, but there's a cost when you talk about building a new structure. The funding source that we're looking at is, and, and the perspective cost that we're talking about?
You, it, it would be, we'd have to evaluate whether or not it could qualify to be used from like a hot fund revenue source, or whether or not this would be something Commissioners' Court would want to issue debt for.
Okay. And what would be the capacity that we're looking at for this?
That's part of what the study would identify, is what type of capacity exists as far as market.
Okay. But we don't have any idea what we, what we would like to have?
Well, we obviously want to build something that will be useful if we do build, if we do find that there's a market. So we haven't identified, we've seen, what we've seen in the region is everything being built from, for example, over in Donna Ana County, a larger venue, to one of the UTEP projects that they recommended to us was a smaller venue, like ranging from 3,000 to what we've seen is like 25,000 in the region. And so that's part of why we would bring in a consultant to help us analyze what our region could handle as far as usefulness.
Okay, so we're talking about amphitheater. We have amphitheater. So are we looking to replace the one that exists in our community now? Or building one in addition to, would it be a larger capacity? Specifically, what are we doing?
We're looking at what the market could handle, whether it could handle an additional one in, in, in addition to the one that exists now? And if so, what size would be appropriate?
Okay.
And where? And where?
Okay. I just asked you a question once, so that the public can know more about what we're doing. But, but more so from my standpoint is that, as we go down this road, I've been down this road before, and I don't want to make sure that we don't make some of the mistakes that we've made in the past.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, I did.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine. Approved the use of inter-local agreement with Potter County, Texas, using the Services Operations Agreement for Community Supervision and Corrections Department awarded to Recovery Monitoring Solutions of Dallas, Texas, to provide drug testing supplies and services for the county of El Paso in the amounts indicated on the tabulation. Furthermore, approved and authorized the county judge to sign the inter-local agreement between the county of El Paso and Potter County. Funding is available in general fund, criminal justice coordination, medical general. Contract number 2020-0176.
Deborah Correjo Troll County Purchasing Agent. If you approve the use of this inter-local, you're approving us to basically form a purchasing partnership for future potential joint or piggybacking types of purchases with Potter County. Their seat is in Amarillo. The reason we want this today is so that we can take advantage of an existing drug testing contract that they have. In the future, they may want to use our contracts, and so this sets up the framework for that as well as approves the use of the drug contract.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 10. Authorized the single-source award of PIP Integrations Trailer and IDP for El Paso County Sheriff's Department to Vigilant Solutions LLC of Livermore, California, in the amount of $135,895. Funding is available in special grant Stone Garden SO-18 capital outlays.
Deborah Correjo Troll County Purchasing Agent. For this item, we're asking you to authorize me to use the exemption in 262024 as a single source. The reason this is single sourced is not only due to the proprietary nature of the software, but the fact that El Paso County, I mean, I'm sorry, the City of El Paso Police Department, New Mexico PD, and the Border Patrol use this. And part of the stipulation of the Stone Garden Grant is that there be interconnectivity and communication. This helps us meet the needs so that we can accept some of those monies.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Deborah.
Item number 11, tax assessor collector. Approved and authorized the county judge to sign the notice of contact, of contract termination letters to the following full-service deputy registration entitling service offices. Express Car Tiling 1, Express Car Tiling 2, Easy Auto Title Registration, Flash Auto Title Registration, Flash Auto Title Registration, Texas Auto Registration and Titles, TriStar Auto Title Company, El Paso Auto, El Paso Auto 2, El Paso Auto 3, El Paso Auto 4, El Paso Auto 5, and El Paso Auto 6.
Good morning, Judge. County Commissioners.
Good morning.
For the record, Ruben Gonzalez, El Paso County Tax Assessor Collector. Judge, this is a, a beginning of a process that we would like your approval to send notice of cancellation letters to these 12 businesses that we have in our, in our county. And once that is done, then we would start the, the compliance of Senate Bill 604, where we have to rebid existing contracts to these offices so that we can start over again a new cycle with a focus of, of trying to, to improve performance and identify fraud, waste, and abuse within these contracted offices. This is a statewide initiative that impacts four counties in the state. So this is the beginning of that process to send letters of cancellation of their existing contracts so they can go out for an RFP and, and, and start the, the process to, to approve them, to stay in business and be full-service deputies on behalf of the county tax assessor collector.
Thank, thank you for the presentation on, on Thursday at our special meeting. Very good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Before I vote, I, I just have a quick question, Mr. Gonzalez. These cancellations are because of poor performance?
No, this is a, this is the recommendation of the county attorney as a procedural that we have to cancel their existing contract that we have now. And then, and then begin.
And they rebid.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Aye. Thank you.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson has stepped out of the meeting. Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you very much.
Item number 12. Approved and authorized the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for full-service deputy 2020 for the county tax assessor collector. In accordance with local government code 26262.030, the purchasing agent has reviewed use of the request for proposal process.
Coming right back.
Okay. Welcome back.
On this item, we're requesting the same exact conversation that we had related to the events and feasibility study. We're requesting permission to use the RFP process because there will be many complex factors associated with this.
And approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 13, economic development. Approved and authorized the county judge to sign the memorandum of understanding between El Paso County and the University of Texas Health Science Center at Houston for services related to the Healthy Food Financing Initiative to develop procedures, impact measurement, and outline each entity's roles and responsibilities in providing long-term capital for businesses to provide healthy foods to underserved communities. Contract number 2019-0951.
Judge Commissioners, I apologize. Andrea's on her way. If we could lay this item aside and move on to item number 17?
Absolutely. Commission?
Thank you, Caesar.
Item number 17 from Health and Social Services. Approved and authorized the county judge to sign the guardianship services agreement with Project Amistad from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021, with three additional one-year renewals. Funding is available in the county general fund, mental health, contract services general. Contract number 2019-0881.
Judge Commissioners, this is a contract to a bid that is awarded in December of 2019. These are our guardianship services agreement. We awarded the bid to Project Amistad back in December 2019 after going through a purchasing procedure. We are seeking to provide guardianship services for individuals living in the county that the, and this is county-wide, that the probate courts have probable cause to believe are incapacitated and do not have a guardian.
Motion to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll go back now to?
Yes, please. If we could go back.
Andrea, or?
Item number 13 from Economic Development. Approved and authorized the county judge to sign the memorandum of understanding between El Paso County and the University of Texas Health Science Center at Houston for services related to the Healthy Food Financing Initiative to develop procedures, impact measurement, and outline each entity's roles and responsibilities in providing long-term capital for businesses to provide healthy foods to underserved communities. Contract number 2019-0951.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Valerie Vanessa, Heritage Tourism Coordinator for Economic Development. And before you, today, we have several items within the Healthy Food Financing Initiative. And we're going to begin with a proposal to switch out the current memorandum of understanding that we have. If you recall, back in July of last summer, we signed an agreement with the Institute for Healthy Living that was then housed out of UTEP. And they have since then, or the purpose of that MOU was to outline all the responsibilities and expectations as one of our key partners. of that MOU was to outline all the responsibilities and expectations as one of our key partners in the administration of the Healthy Food Financing Initiative Program, a new program for the county as far as their evaluation and impact measurement. Since then, we've been notified as of December that the IHL has dissolved and reorganized. It is now being housed out of the UT Health Science Center of Houston, the El Paso campus through their School of Public Health, which is located at the Cardwell Collaborative here in the MCA Campus in central El Paso. So this MOU continues to outline those roles and responsibilities between the county and the UT Health Center of Houston. We now have full-time staff. Gabriela is, has been hired as a full-time faculty member as opposed to being contract labor, so this will also make things a lot more smooth moving forward. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Stout?
No? Move to approve?
Yeah, second.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Healthy Food Financing Initiative Grant Agreement between Desert Spoon Food Hub and El Paso County for a three-year term beginning upon the date of signature in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Funding is available in General Fund Economic Impact Healthy Food. Contract number two thousand twenty zero zero three nine.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Once again, Valerie Vanessa, Economic Development Department Heritage Tourism Coordinator. And this is the first of three proposed awards that we're bringing forth for your approval this morning. Desert Foods Spoon Hub was initially established in two thousand fifteen as EP True Food. They operate as a wholesale distributor of regionally sourced foods throughout the community. They have a home delivery program, farm-to-work programs through the city and county, and they also, as of two thousand nineteen, expanded as a nonprofit, and they continue to provide assistance to low-income growers throughout the region. They've taken on contracts with the University Medical Center and the American Heart Association. Their total project cost is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. They have procured additional assistance through the American Heart Association, who provided them with the grant to fill in the funding gap between our cap, which is at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you approve their award this morning, they will install a warehouse distribution center in central El Paso at seventeen-fourteen Yandel, along with a micro grocery store for the public to have access to healthy and affordable foods throughout the week. They'll also be using the funding for equipment purchases, including a van, to expand their delivery assistance throughout five additional zip codes across the county. They'll also be using a portion of their funding for marketing and signage outside of the property to let the community know that they're available as a resource. Are there any questions about the Desert Foods Spoon Hub project?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Robinson?
The items approved that we're talking about that they're going to be selling for the healthy food?
Yes, sir.
In their reporting requirement, are we be able to specify and receive their direct input as far as exactly how much sales in those products that they're selling under this agreement?
Yes, sir. That's one of the beauties of the evaluation and impact measurement of the Healthy Food Financing Initiative as a whole, is that our partners from the UT School of Health will be working to customize the evaluation based on the specifics of each individual project awarded, and there is quite an extensive amount of quarterly reporting that will be included, along with site visits.
So they'll better break it down on a monthly basis, how much and what products they sell under this agreement?
Yes, sir. We can certainly ask them for copies of their sales records and inventories as part of the reporting process.
I for one would definitely like to see that.
Absolutely. We'll be sure to provide reporting to the court.
I believe it's quarterly, but not monthly, but I believe it's quarterly reporting is required?
No, no, I know it's quarterly reporting, but I'm saying, but it's broken down by month, though.
Yes, sir.
But your sales, you tell your sales each month, although your report requirement is quarterly. Is that correct?
They'll be keeping track of monthly sales, and then they'll also be reporting quarterly to the county, and we'd be more than happy to share those reports on a quarterly basis to the full commission as well.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
The recipients here, any of the recipients here today?
Yes.
Yeah?
Would you like to say?
Yeah, would you like to come? Yes, thank you.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I'm Patsy Terraza Stallworth, pleasure to be here.
Good morning, I'm Vanessa Brady.
And I'm Adriana Klow.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Any comments about the process or anything that can help us? Your feedback, please.
I think the main thing is we're excited. We're excited about the support of something that we've been working on for over five years. We started this project as an idea, seeing that our community needed access to local food and healthy and fresh food, then also seeing that fair prices are needed on the agricultural sector. So making sure that we create market opportunities for our local producers while gaining access and food availability for our county, for the residents of El Paso, was extremely important to us. So this is just one step as an expansion of what we've been doing for five years.
Well, that's excellent. You know, agricultural industry is so important, and I don't know if it's overlooked or we don't quite appreciate it, but I think this will sort of highlight the importance of our agricultural, how it integrates with our community and how we could have fast local products here in El Paso.
Absolutely. We would love to have, you know, scheduled meetings with you, and we can share what we see out in the field and what the challenges are.
Well, thank you. That's what we want, the reason for you to come forward is that it's a collaborative effort, and I know the court is very pleased at these awards and very happy to see that they're taking place. So thank you very much, and best of luck.
Judge, I have a question.
Commissioner Robinson?
What type of product do you have, and do you sell in bulk?
We have two, well, we have a farm box, what we call is what's available out to the public, and that's available through online ordering, and it's entirely fruit and vegetables every week that is dependent on the availability of the food that we have access to with local growers, and then also being supplemented through additional distributors that we work with. But our primary goal is, of course, to bring market opportunities for our local producers, and fresh, raw fruits and vegetables are the way for us to do that. We recently signed a contract with UMC to provide, it's a local procurement agreement where we provide access as a distributor for access to local foods. And the same agreement is what we have with EPISD, to help implement ways for them to have value added to local food products through marketing and support, and that's what we, as a food hub, that's what our role is, to make it just easier for local producers to get into these larger institutional organizations, which are difficult for a small family farm to do.
And two excellent partners.
Yes, they are two excellent.
UMC, wow, that's excellent, that's excellent.
So individually, I could go come and buy a large quantity of food?
Individually, you can actually go to our website currently and order a farm box, and then we have additional add-ons where people can add additional fruits and vegetables, or we work with local businesses as well to offer fresh baked breads, pecans. But as an individual, what we're hoping is with the store, it gives more of a flexibility and choice to the consumer where they can come to the store and purchase exactly what they want. Right now, the food box is, we decide what's going to be in the food box in the set amount of items. But hopefully with the store, that's a choice.
And they'll be available when?
Our farm boxes?
You know, the store.
The store? Well, this grant would be part of the store opening up, so hopefully by mid-year, we'll...
Oh, thank you.
Okay, I look forward to it.
Yeah, we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know there's some pictures being taken. Do you want to step up and we'll take a picture? This will be the kickoff for you.
We've got a vote. Move to approve. This is a little thing that we have to do. And I just, I just want to, I just want to thank you all for taking interest in the program. It's something that we've been working on for a couple of years now, and thank you for the patience that you've had with the county, because, you know, it's a government process, and sometimes it can take some time, but, you know, you all have not waned in your enthusiasm and willingness to work with us, and so I really appreciate that, and, you know, pending this vote, congratulations on being the first recipient of a grant with our new HFFI program.
Commissioner Stout, thank you for your leadership in this program. You have a second, right?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Of course, thanks to the IHL and to our Economic Development staff, too, for all the hard work that you all have put into this, and the American Heart Association, too. I don't know, there's probably not somebody representing them here today, but they did quite a bit of the legwork when it came to helping us write the policy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Valerie?
Yay. We'll be sure to invite you to the grand opening once the...
Oh, okay, that's part of it.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Healthy Food Financing Initiative Grant Agreement between Extreme Core Fitness and El Paso County for a three-year term beginning upon the date of signature in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. Funding is available in General Fund Economic Impact Healthy Food. Contract number two thousand twenty zero zero four one.
Right, this is a very unique, Valerie Vanessa, Economic Development Heritage Tourism Coordinator. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you. This is the second of three proposed projects being brought forth for you to approve this morning. Extreme Core Fitness began in two thousand fifteen in Horizon City as a twenty-four-hour fitness center and weight room that provides classes and access to exercise equipment. And as of January of two thousand nineteen, just this past year, owner and operator Crystal Chulua, based on the reactions and requests of her guests and clientele, established a nine-hundred-foot square, a square foot commercial kitchen in her property where she provides access to a meal prep service at a very affordable cost. It includes a protein, and they can be bundled at five per week for thirty dollars or six dollars and fifty cents per meal. They're air-fried, so there's no grease involved, and it's also airtight packaging, which means that it lasts a little bit longer. And she says that these meals are particularly popular with teachers and truck drivers who tend to lead both, well, truck drivers on the sedentary lifestyle and teachers who have very busy lifestyles and don't often have time. This is the current setup of her kitchen with the grant that she has requested from the county through the HFFI program. She would be installing two additional air fryers and pressure cookers, as well as an additional stainless steel countertop. She'll also be able to hire two additional staff and expand her meal delivery service throughout other areas in far east El Paso. A small portion of the grant would also be used towards marketing and promotion, letting people know that she's expanded her meal service to serve more people. This is a diagram of where she proposes to install the new worktop refrigerator, air fryers, pressure cooker, and the stainless steel tabletop for the prep portion. With your approval, this grant would be in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars towards the expansion of the Extreme Core Fitness's healthy food prep service. Are there any questions about this particular grant proposal?
Are they here today? Bunch of them?
Ms. Crystal could not be here today. She's actually out delivering meals right as we speak. Monday is her big delivery day for the week.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number sixteen, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Healthy Food Financing Initiative Grant Agreement between Growing with Sarah Farm LLC and El Paso County for a three-year term beginning upon the date of signature in the amount of sixty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-three cents. Funding is available in General Fund Economic Impact Healthy Food. Contract number two thousand twenty zero zero four two.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Valerie Vanessa, Economic Development Heritage Tourism Coordinator, bringing forth to you the third of three different HFFI project award proposals. This particular one is for Growing with Sarah Farms. They have a heritage farm that's been certified by Texas Department of Agriculture in Socorro here off of the Mission Trail. It's been family-owned for over a hundred years, if I'm not mistaken. It's located on a historic adobe structure and also has six acres of farmland attached to it. In two thousand seventeen, the Loyah family began the extensive restoration and adaptive reuse project and resumed their farm operations, opening it up to Taylorhood Farms, who currently farms the six acres and also has recently installed a hoop house to allow for year-long production. So they operate as a mixed-use development, not only as a food hub, but the adjacent properties have been established as artist residences and a cafe and gallery space. This is an outline of what the sixty-three thousand dollar grant would be in support of. They would be retrofitting the smaller structure on the left-hand side there as a refrigeration unit, providing cold storage for area growers to take advantage of, and they would also be sealing up the larger property into a year-round farmer's market stand. So they'll be purchasing equipment for sanitizing and preparing product for market, and also to store the product and prepare for sales to the public. The total cost of this project is over eighty-seven thousand dollars. The Loyah family has already invested over twenty-four thousand to date, in addition to being the owners of the property itself. In addition to the equipment and farmer's market stand supplies, as well as the construction of the refrigeration unit, some of the funds would be used for marketing and promotion, as well as signage to let the public know that they're open for business. And Ms. Marty Loyah is here with me today, if you'd like to hear a few words from her.
Absolutely. Good morning.
Commissioners?
Morning.
So I have lived on this property all my life. My father was a cotton farmer in the Lower Valley for many years, so we are actually retrofitting the farm now to provide healthy food for the residents of Socorro and outside of Socorro as well, too. About three years ago, we started growing, not knowing it was possible to start growing actually produce, fruits and vegetables, fruits we knew would produce, and they have been producing, but now we have kale, we have lettuce, we have carrots, we have turnips. So we knew that we could do this, we could grow the produce on the farm itself, and now with this grant, we're hoping to expand and be able to actually create a farmer's stand to grow the fruits and vegetables instead of out of the kitchen of our house. That's what we did last year. So it's a project in steps, and we're very excited about this.
Well, thank you, and it touches so many agriculture, obviously, the healthy food and on the Mission Trail, which is so important to us, that we're working on that, so the best of luck to you, and thank you for participating. And once again, the Commissioners Court, we want to be, you know, collaborative and see what we could do to make sure that you continue your success.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good question.
Commissioner Robinson?
One of the products you said, you mentioned you had turnips. If you had turnips, you had turnips.
turnips, you had turnip greens, right?
Correct.
Said you, turnips, but you, if you have turnips, you must have turnip greens.
Yes, yes.
How about collard greens?
They're purple.
I see. Do you have them?
Have them, yes.
Collard greens?
No, we have kale and lettuce right now.
But you had a turnip?
But we have turnips, too.
With turnip greens? Okay.
Specifically green.
Yes.
I'll be able to see you.
Okay. Sounds good.
So much for, for, for your participation in the program and, and you know, this is a, this is a really interesting project as well. And, and I'm glad that we're able to, to help you out and expand your, expand your business.
We're excited, very excited.
Move to approve, or do we have a?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You want to also?
Thank you.
Jessica?
Item number 18, Human Resources. Approve and authorize a revision to the county of El Paso's promotions policy.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Michelle Cochran of the Human Resources Department. The purpose of today's agenda item is to seek the court's approval on the revisions to the county's promotions policy. As you recall, the county used to lag behind many other jurisdictions in how we handled compensation as well as promotions. A few years ago, the county, through the HR department, began integrating a consistent compensation and promotion policy philosophy for attorneys. The policy before you today addresses a conflict which exists within our employment procedures and promotion policies for attorneys. The current policy inadvertently treats external candidates better than our current employees, which is definitely not the message that we wish to send, especially with hard-to-fill positions such as attorneys. Therefore, the promotions policy being presented to you today will allow for the same flexibility for the law offices to internally promote and have that placement flexibility that we do for new hires. HR will continue to verify the placement, but it will allow for them to be compensated commensurable with their experience, however not to exceed two steps higher than the original placement per the policy. If the policy approved today, is approved today, excuse me, HR will work with the law offices to verify any changes based off of the attorneys promoted on or after October 1st of 2018. The current estimated impact of that would be eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. This has been verified with budget, and we do have salary savings to cover that cost. Do you have any questions for me?
Let's see, any comments additional?
This is just, this is a policy that is well-needed, and it, it allows us to treat our employees as well as we treat brand-new hires, which has been a problem. I will tell you, I am still, I, I'd asked that we approve this today. We're still evaluating how this would impact previous employees as well, who were in existence before the date that the, that the policy is going into effect for. But at this time, we want to get it fixed so going forward, we don't continue to perpetuate the problem. So we'd ask for your consideration of approval of this item today.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Item number 19, Public Works. Approve and accept the revision of Horizon Marketplace Replat A to be named Horizon Marketplace Replat C pursuant to requirements of the Texas Local Government Code Section 232.041. Further authorize the filing and recording of the subdivision plat.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Sosa Llano Neros with the Planning and Development Department.
Good morning.
The item before you this morning is a replat, a reconfiguration of a single commercial lot into two different lots. This is the site location of the map. You can see it's located south of, just to the west of the East Lake and Rojas intersection in precinct number three. It's right close to the interstate as well. The property will be served by the Basale Vista Municipal Utility District for water and store service. As part of the original plat, the site is served by regional ponding to address any stormwater runoff issues. And again, the reason for this replat is to split one, one large commercial lot into two smaller commercial lots. Our staff did not verify, our staff did not locate any platno restrictions or deed or covenant restrictions which might prohibit the reconfiguration or replating of the slot. The original plat was approved by the Commissioners Court back on May 6th, 2019. It was Horizon Marketplace Replat A. And lot number two is being reconfigured, and so lot number two is the lot that's being split here in this replat. Here's a site map of the proposed replat. You can see here that it's just the lot split into two lots. As such, Planning and Development recommends approval, given that the proposed replat has met all the necessary state and local requirements. Ask for the court's favorable consideration. Happy to take any questions the court may have.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 20, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the advance funding agreement amendment and accompanying resolution between the Texas Department of Transportation and El Paso County for the engineering design of John Hayes, correction, John Hayes, Darrington and Berryville Phases One and Two. Funding is available in General Fund, EPCMP, Professional Services General, Contract Number 2020-0131.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Sosa Llano Neros, the Planning and Development Department. This funding agreement is between the county and the Texas Department of Transportation for the design services of the John Hayes Extension. As the court is aware, the staff will begin working on the design with a design consultant to extend John Hayes or Darrington north of Bellicano up to Mountwood. It's a three-mile stretch. The design will be for a six-lane divided roadway that will include sidewalks, landscaping, shared use paths, full illumination, as well as ponding to address any stormwater concerns that the roadway may generate. So this agreement is to secure the design funds that are available at the MPO for this project. The county is eligible for an economically disadvantaged county discount, which reduces our match from 20% to seven and a half percent. So the total match that is required for this, or the total amount of funds that will be required for this is just under nine hundred thousand dollars for the full design. Part of that includes a match as well as a local contribution that the court had agreed to back when these plans were submitted to the MPO in 2018. Just to provide a little bit more information about the project, once it moves forward, the MPO has recommended that the construction be accelerated from 2023 to 2022. So this design will take approximately 12 to 18 months. At such time, we'll be heading right into fiscal year 2022, and we can begin construction as soon as we're done with design. So the first phase will be constructing the three, three lanes on the eastbound side. And then the second phase, which the funds are available at the MPO in 2025, will be constructing the lanes on the western side of the road, as well as reconfiguring and striping the lane to be a full six-lane. So this was done just to ensure that there was funding available at the MPO to fund the entire project. That's why it was split up. But at such time that additional funding may become available at the MPO, we will have a completely designed shovel-ready project. So if funds became available, we could construct all six lanes at one time, funding permitted at the MPO. So with that, we would ask the, for the court's favorable consideration. Happy to take any questions related to this.
Question.
Commissioner Robinson?
Not really a question, but more so the fact that I, you really answered my question in part of your presentation about being shovel-ready. You know, as far as, what latitude do we have to start working on projects that haven't shovel-ready pending the funding?
Significant latitude, sir. So the, so this is an example of a project where we actually had design money from the MPO to begin design work. However, any other project that we anticipate using federal funding for, we can begin design work even if it's funded completely by the county. We just have to ensure that we follow, follow the federal process for the design, which includes doing a preliminary schematic, a full environmental assessment, and then moving into final design. And as long as we follow those steps, that project becomes shovel-ready for any federal funds. And if money falls out of the sky or becomes available through some infrastructure bill, such as the one the White House is proposing, there would be projects ready to, to move into that direction. So we are looking to identify opportunities where we may have some projects that are in the queue at the MPO that we would like to have shovel-ready, and then maybe potentially identify savings from the vehicle registration fee, bond proceeds at the RMA to actually begin that design work, just so that we're ready in the event that funding becomes available.
How many projects do we have that are shovel-ready?
At this point, we have, we have one project that's shovel-ready right now that did not follow the federal process, and that's the Darrington widening, which will begin once we complete Mission Ridge. This project is going to get going soon, and we're looking to bring forth the Tierra de la Nesta extension, which is, which is about two miles west of this that would provide connectivity from Bellicano north to the Mountwood Saragossa area. So that is a project that we're looking to bring in to have a shovel-ready project. And there's a few others that we're still trying to identify, just to ensure that we have the best, that we're, that we're waiting the completion of the major thoroughfare plan to actually have a rhyme and a reason as to why we selected certain projects to become shovel-ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 21, Grant Applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners Court for final acceptance and approval. Item number 21, approve and authorize the 65th Judicial District Protective Order Court to apply for the Governor's Office Violence Against Women Act grant in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, with a grant match of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars from September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021. If awarded, the county match will be appropriated in the fiscal year, in the fiscal year 21 budget. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution, Contract Number 2020-0129.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Samaniego and County Commissioner Sam Victor Salas, the newly-appointed Associate Judge of the 65th Protective Order Court. I took the bench on January 2nd, 2020, after Judge Joe Gonzalez decided to step down and return to the county attorney's office. Pardon me. I'm here this morning seeking your approval to apply for the Violence Against Women Justice and Training Program Grant for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. This grant is funded by the officer of the governor, and the grant amount request is for one, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. This is the 11th year that the Protective Order Court is applying for this grant. The 65th Protective Order Court has been successfully funded for the past 10 years. In reviewing the, the recording and the minutes for last year's meeting, I saw that all of you approved the request that was presented by Judge Gonzalez. I would like to take a moment to remind the court that this grant is used to pay 71% of the salaries for both the court reporter and the court bailiff. The county pays the remaining 29% of the, from the general fund to satisfy the match required for this grant. The grant will also pay for training costs for the, the judge, myself, and for court office supplies. Thus far, the 65th Protective Order Court has been very successful in meeting the county's mission and strategic plan. It is a unique and progressive judicial model that provides services to the citizens of El Paso in a professional and very effective manner. In fact, the governor's office sees this court as a model for other courts of this nature. I respectfully request that this court move to approve the application for the grant and present the resolution, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Judge Salas.
Motion to approve? Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 22, approve and authorize the establishment of an El Paso County Mental Health Court as a mandate by Texas Senate Bill 562 through the 205th District Court, thereby creating a mental health court program titled Wellness and Recovery Treatment Program. Further authorize the county judge and Commissioners Court to sign the resolution establishing the program as required by the Texas Office of Court Administration, Contract Number 2020-0172.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. You know, I, the kind of person, I'm not normally nervous, but you know, it's like being called down to the principal's office today. I don't know if you noticed, I was actually here early. And I was so nervous that I thought I was also here for the purchasing board, but I was, I think, a week or two weeks early on that hearing. So I realize, and I've learned this from my years of practice, that, you know, being set later in the docket and obviously here later in the agenda really requires me to work on being brief, and I'm going to try to do that. But of course, I am here also to answer any questions that you might have, and I'm ready and prepared to do that. Very briefly, when I became judge of the 205th District Court, which is the only court that sits in El Paso that also has jurisdiction in Hudson and Culberson Counties, you know, I had one goal in mind. I'm going to be a good, hard-working, fair judge, and I'm not going to, as I like to joke with some of my colleagues, I'm not going to try to be a student council kind of judge. I don't want any extra projects. I don't want to do anything else, at least not for a while. I want to figure out the, the job of judging and do it and do it well and work hard. And, and I was on my way to doing that. And early on in my career as a judge, one of the things that became apparent is that, number one, is that we were keeping an inordinate amount of people in jail, not because of their criminal history, but because of their mental illness. And what also became increasingly clear is that a lot of these people had some really long rap sheets, but there were rap sheets for things that on paper looked like really serious crimes, thefts, burglaries, burglary of a vehicle. And what I also learned was that by doing what judges are supposed to do, which is do an individualized hearing, listen to the district attorney, listen to the public defender, and listen to any other evidence that is being provided, I realized that an awful lot of these individuals were people who had a record, but really were not a danger to the community. These were people who had fallen victims to a wheel in a process that just recycled them. And all it did, rather than rehabilitate them, or rather than address the issues of why they were there, is that these individuals were being labeled and labeled and labeled, which only meant that every time they got arrested for something like cases that I've had. And one of the cases that leads me to where I am today is that people who had, for example, stealing a pencil from the dollar store were now subject to state jail felonies because of the number of cases and the number of charges that they'd had in the past. And so as I was doing my job, one of the things that happened is our, my friends at Emergence Health Network and the probation department approached me. And I was very reluctant to take on any new projects. I was very reluctant to do anything more than what my job requires of me. But the demand and the issues that were being called upon and that I was made aware of, and most importantly, that were not being addressed. We have wonderful specialty courts that have their hands full with a lot of other issues. But one of the things that does not happen, and I, and Judge, I know that you have some background in mental health issues, is that we had a problem with co-occurrence conditions. We had a problem with people who might have a drug addiction but also have a mental health issue. And at some point, it doesn't even matter which came first, because at the end of the day, we have people with these, these unbelievable number of issues. And so as we're moving forward, my friends initially at the probation department and at EHN started meeting with me and asking me to start working on a mental health court. And we've been doing this and working on this for over two years. And so, and this is the part where I'm getting long, so I'm going to cut it short. And so what happened as a result of this work? magnificent work on mental health issues in our community. Um, and we began meeting, and we began looking at so many of the issues, the sixteen-twenty-two issues under the Texas Penal, um, under the Code of Criminal Procedure, um, that, again, we have people going to jail and not being assessed, and need medical, uh, issues, specifically mental health issues that needed to be addressed. And so, we started working on where some of those gaps were. People who were suicidal and were not being identified going into the jail. People who had very serious medical and med, uh, medicine, uh, medication issues that needed to be addressed and weren't being addressed. And so, we worked on this, and, and we've been working on it, because there are so many gaps. Uh, but there are so many good people in this community that are working very hard and very courageously to address these issues, that, uh, there comes a time when you're called upon to do certain work, and you just can't say no. And that's where I find myself. I'm, I'm, uh, I started off as the reluctant mental health court judge. And so, what we've done with this work, and as a result of the work that we've done, and what we've identified, uh, I'm very, very proud to tell you that I serve on the Judicial Commission on Mental Health, which is created by the Texas Supreme Court and the Court of Criminal Appeals. And there is one other judge that sits on that commission who was instrumental in ensuring that I testified before, before a joint session of the Texas Supreme Court and the Court of Criminal Appeals, uh, and that's Judge Sukurita of County Court at Law Number Six. And she also sits on that commission, and so does State Representative, uh, Joe Moody by special assignment. The work that we're doing at the state level on addressing these issues has been incredible, and we've been working on it for about a year and a half. And I'm gonna continue to work that, and I'm happy to be a voice for El Paso to talk about the issues and the needs, about the intercepts, about the fact that these mental health issues don't just begin, um, when they get arrested, they begin before they get arrested, they, they begin in the commit, uh, community, and they go on through, and they go through, uh, after they're convicted. And so, what we've been working on, and what we have identified, is that we're going to set up a mental health court. Uh, and as I mentioned before, it's been over a two-year process. And this mental health court will be a post-conviction, um, mental health court, meaning that once there's been a resolution, whether it's a conviction or a plea, uh, we will then make sure that we take all the steps necessary to ensure that people are getting the medical services they require, which is medication and doctor's appointments and therapy, but that they are also getting, um, the supervision that is required of this, uh, because that is such a challenge to ensure that people take the medication they need, that they have access. And there are so many other issues, housing, transportation, people can't do stuff if they don't have access to all of these needs. And at the end of the day, what we're hoping to do is, number one, which has been the, the norm around the country, which is to reduce recidivism, meaning less people re-offend, less people commit crimes. And that's not just good, and it's not just a safety issue for our community, it's also a cost-saving measure for our community. Imagine that, doing good and saving money. Um, and so, that's, in, in essence, what we've been working on. I ca, before I, I stop talking, which, it's, it's occupational hazard. Uh, I want to recognize the partners that have been absolutely instrumental, because when we started these meetings and for at least two, well, even to this day, I would say, that I am the person at the table that knows the least about mental health and mental illness issues. Uh, but I'm the person, because of the authority, uh, and the privilege that I've been afforded by this community, that is in a position to do something about these issues, to bring people together, to address these issues, and to work on these issues. But we would not be able to do this without the help of Emergence Health, Health Network, the probation department, the Paso del Norte Health Foundation, the public defender's office, which needs to be a partner, because they're, they're every day, James Barza and the district attorney's office, because they're there every day, uh, Joanne Bernal, our county attorney, uh, the criminal law magistrates, and UTEP partners who have been working on the research that shows and reminds us that keeping people out of jail with the right supervision, with the right medication, is far more productive. One of the cases that I think caught the attention of, of my colleagues is a gentleman that we spent thousands of taxpayer dollars sending him to another community because he was declared incompetent, and so to restore his competency, so that he could stand trial. And, and they did their job, it took over a year. When that person, that individual came back, in no time, that person immediately began decompensating. But because, and our mental health court was not up and running at the time, it still isn't, but because of the ad hoc efforts that we were doing, that person was able to get out, get the medical help, the medical supervision, the medication, and obviously, the pre-trial supervision that was required, and that person has been well since then. Now, there are, there are story after story, but we've only done it on an ad hoc basis, on an ad hoc level. And so, what we're trying to do, and what we've been working on in setting this up, we're in the unusual situation right now, though, that, because it's now mandated, and it's required by the legislature. Um, the, the only, uh, group that was working on setting up the mental health court was our group, uh, and so, we've been asked by the county attorney and now the, um, the grants department to apply for one of those grants that we are clearly eligible for. And so, that's what we're doing here, we're requesting that grant. Um, well, and like I said, I can keep talking and talking, especially when it's good folks like you, I, I know you all understand the, the importance and the need for this. Um, but so, rather than keep telling you, all I can say is this, is it's required, it's needed, we've done the legwork for over two years, there are so many committed people, uh, that are working on this, we have a voice at the table at the state level, uh, Judge Gurita and, uh, Representative Moody and myself are happy to serve in that capacity and to continue to work. There will be, we hope, additional funding in the future that we will be able to access. Uh, and so, with that, I leave you. Um, I, I am here to answer any questions more than anything, uh, and so, at this point, I do have some of our partners, um, that are with us. Um, if you're, if you want to hear from them as well, what I will tell you is that, um, the probation department has agreed to provide, at their expense, in kind, uh, a probation office that's gonna be dedicated to our court, and EHN has dedicated, at their expense, two caseworkers that will be, uh, assigned to our court at their expense. Uh, and that's just, uh, something that is very needed, it's something that I'm very grateful, and I hope it shows you, uh, the level of commitment, uh, that we have from the community. At some point down the road during the budget process, we're gonna come to you to request a position, uh, to be able to be a specialty court liaison for that, but we're not there yet, because our grant right now is being submitted, we're on a short deadline, not established by us, uh, and, and we need your support, we need you to, obviously, go ahead and ask, uh, allow us to establish this mental health court, and then, of course, your permission to request for this grant. Thank you.
Judge Dominguez, uh, thank you very much. First of all, the orientation, you know, that people, I, I think they're not understanding, and what you just said, uh, begins to create that awareness that is so important. I'm glad you're saying yes to, uh, they say reluctance leading to action i- is very favorable, because, you know, you were resistant, so you were trying to figure out things, and getting there was very important. Uh, but this is something that is so much needed, you have great partners, you know, I know probation department and, and Emergence Health Network is an incredible partner. Uh, so, we, we thank you for that, uh, I think it's long overdue, and I think one thing that you did say that was very important, and early on, when I talked to EHN, was that, you know, it's an economic consideration as well, as, as much as we know how much it helps, uh, and, and one of the most important things that you said that I've known from my background is discernment. And the discernment with mental health is, is very difficult, it's very difficult, and we sort of lump 'em in, and we forget, we wanna say, uh, mental health is secondary, and whatever's happening is primary, and then that takes 'em off in a different, uh, route, and, and so, that's really important. But the economic impact, uh, there's a, a book, or a book that includes Million Dollar Murray, that, uh, spends a million dollars on, to keep someone in the streets, is what it's about. You know, it costs a million dollars to keep him in the streets, psychiatric, criminal, all the things at hospitals and all this, and our community, or that community, was not willing to pay a hundred thousand, which is probably what it would have cost, to do the things to help him in a ten-year period. And so, this understanding of how it impacts our economic development and how we're helping people, but we're also, uh, creating a community that's more acceptable, that allows people to visit us with, when you see in the streets that we don't see how the problems that Austin has and San Francisco and all these other communities, so there's a lot that's happening, but I think the puzzle, the piece of the puzzle that was missing, was to have that mental health court, because it's extremely valuable. And once again, like I said, it's a discernment of allowing us to say, we care enough about you, to know this is what the mental health issues are that we need to address, and this is what we have from a legal perspective, and we'll find that this one is a lot smaller than this one. And then, we can take off on that path that you just mentioned. So, thank you for, for that involvement, and for Gurita, uh, on, on my behalf, and I'm sure the Commissioner's Court, so, uh, I, I, I think it's an, an amazing, and, and you're also very welcome, anybody that wants to, to say a few words, Maggie, Crystal, anybody that wants to add to it.
Judge, I have a question.
Commissioner Perez?
You, you know, Judge, you know, something that I think is, uh, often overlooked on this is the public safety aspect of this. You, you know, it, it's, uh, jails have become our largest, you know, mental health facilities, and we've known this for some time, and, and I think that often gets lost in this, you know, there, there's, there's recent cases, uh, there's always that one case, right, where there's, uh, somebody who had a mental he, underlying mental health issue, goes and re-offends, but what gets lost in that is the broader efforts to keep the community safe, and I wonder if you can just address that from your perspective. In the absence of having these options as a judge, uh, you know, for treatment, pre-trial supervision, uh, other, other tools at your disposal, what happens?
Well, I have to be very careful, um, with, with my comments, because obviously, and I'm not good, very good with poker and, 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 I'm a judge, which is a politically-elected position, but I'm not a politician, so I'm not, I'm not as suave or as good as, as doing some of that. So, I'll say this, everybody and anybody who knows and should know, judges cannot speak publicly on cases that are pending before them. So, um, I wish I could, but I'm not allowed, and I am honorable and ethical enough that I'm never gonna violate my oath, uh, under the, uh, under the Texas Constitution, so, and the professional rules that govern that. But having said that, what I can tell you is this, and what I do know about the work that, that all of us are doing at this courthouse, and I'm very proud of my colleagues that do that, is that part of what happens is this, we have an incredibly imperfect system. And when you're talking about people with mental illness, and you're talking about people who commit crimes, um, by their very nature, they're not perfect. And so, the job that we're left with is, how do we, um, oversee justice? How do we protect the community, but also act humanely towards our citizens? And empower them, and rehabilitate them, so that we have a healthy, loving, caring community? And so, what has happened is, and what is happening in this community, is that we're having great success with that, but you're right, that doesn't get, uh, the publicity that it deserves. Uh, in, instead, we get, um, like, the one, um, outlier, um, of horrible situations that are the ones that are reported on. But I can assure you, and I can assure every one of you, that the work that we're doing in this community, and it's not just me, because I've actually learned, and I know that, I saw all the other grants that are in line, and the specialty courts that are here, are people who are working, and I want to say, I mean, one of my heroes on the specialty court, uh, circuit is, is Judge Anchondo, who I saw, he's still here. Judge Anchondo, you know, is nationally recognized for the work that he's doing. DWIs in this community are an incredible problem. And, 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 you know, we will always hear about the person that re-offends, but what we don't hear about the, the persons that, that are saved, the families that are saved, the communities that are safer because of that. And so, that is one of the things that we're doing, I'm very proud to be a part of it, um, notwithstanding unfair, uh, and, and uninformed criticisms, but I'm very, very proud, uh, to serve. It's hard sometimes to go forward, uh, but the work needs to be done, we're doing the work, and there are a lot of people in this community that are doing the work, uh, and I'm just very, very fortunate to be surrounded by people like the ones that are standing behind me, who are committed to that work, uh, and I give you my word that I'm going to continue to be committed to that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Move to approve?
Judge?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, I wanted to just ask one question of, of Judge Dominguez. So, on the, on the position, is there a reason why we're not including it in the grant?
Yes.
Or some amount?
The reason for the, for that is this, is two of the most fundamental needs that we need, and that's just two, because if I could, I would have also asked for, um, housing costs, um, to, from the grant, are, people need medication. And the other one is, we need doctors, we need people to be assessed, we need, they need therapy, they need counseling. And so, those professional services and the medication is incredibly expensive. Uh, and while we already have other programs that we plan and have been taking advantage of, uh, we need that money. And so, to, to request in the grant, the position would cut into that money, which frankly, I can't do, not in good conscience, and, and I would not do that. Uh, and so, it is a mandated position, it's required by the legislature that we have a court as a county of two-hundred thousand or, or more, uh, citizens. And so, for that reason, it's, since it's something that is required of the county, that's the reason why I, I did not want to request that in the grant, because by its very nature, my concern is that they're going to request that we lower our request in other areas that are absolutely critical.
So, the grant has a cap of how much we can apply for?
I'm not the grant expert, I just know that if I looked at the other cra, uh, at the other grants, um, my sense is that we're within the range of what the other ra, uh, grants are requesting.
Can you read in item number twenty-three as it pertains to the grant, we're only on twenty-two to establish it, so?
Sure.
Item number twenty-three, and there is a correction to read in for the item as well. Item twenty-three should read, approve and authorize the two-hundred-and-fifth District Court Wellness and Recovery Treatment Program to apply for the Governor's Office Specialty Courts Program in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars from September first, two thousand twenty through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Further approve and authorize the allocation of county funds for the position of specialty court liaison in the amount of sixty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars. No county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution. Contract number two thousand twenty zero-one-six-seven.
Judge Commissioners, Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Um, I did reach out to my staff to ask if there were any upper limits in the application itself. Um, there is a lower limit that a grant cannot be any lower than ten thousand dollars, but there, as I understand it, there is not an upper limit on what the application could be written for.
Just a, Commissioner Leon, you had a comment?
Just had a quick question, and Judge, I agree with, uh, everything you've said, but Wally, uh, what would be the total impact on our budget, and do we have a location?
Um, so, the total impact, as mentioned here, would be the sixty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten. This grant application, if awarded later this summer, uh, would be effective September one, so there would be one fiscal month of this year that we have not budgeted, and eleven fiscal months of fiscal year two thousand twenty-one that aren't currently budgeted.
Okay.
And the location would be in the existing courtroom of Judge Dominguez?
Yes.
It'd be you, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, as, as part of the, as part of the motion, can, can we request that that position be added to the grant application?
You could, but I think what, what Judge Dominguez would need to assure that the program's able to be successful, is if we added it to the application and it were denied or something else was cut, um, what I think Judge Dominguez needs to know from the county is that we would, um, supplement the funding. So, say, for example, they say, okay, we'll approve the position, but we're gonna cut your medical, your medical cost. And for this program to be successful, you need all those components. And so, we would have to be willing to commit to helping to fund some of those other costs if those, which have not been something we've traditionally done, but it is something that this court has expressed a lot of interest in doing as far as, um, the mental health continuation. Am I, so, that's, that's what, what, basically, if we, if we were to include it in the grant, we would need some assurance that if it's not, if the grant is cut, that we're going to make up the funding depending on whatever is cut from the grant.
And Wally Hargrove from Budget and Fiscal, so what I would recommend, if the court were to make that consideration, when we conduct our budget hearing, if that grant award has not been made yet, that we could consider the inclusion of the appropriate amount of contingencies for that purpose.
Maggie?
I just wanted to say, um, we've been collaborating for years. Um, good morning, everyone, my name is Magdalena Maralizaina, I'm the director for the adult probation. Um, the big part of working with justice-involved individuals with serious behavioral health conditions is being able to provide access to care. Unfortunately, Texas is not a Medicaid expansion state, so the majority of the folks that we work with, mental health treatment is one of the myriad of social issues that we have to tackle. So, for us, as a collaborative, and we have Emergence Health Network here, who's a local mental health authority, the best way for us to be able to come to the table is the probation department is providing in-kind a continuity of care provider and two positions, and a dedicated, uh, community supervision officer. Up, uh, Emergence, and I'll invite Crystal to come up, uh, we're bringing to the table staff, full-time employees, to demonstrate to the state that we're very committed, that we've been doing this work for many, many years. It's something that's important, I, I believe that it's time, and throughout, being so far away from Austin, you know, we've never really had the access to- this work for many, many years, it's something that's important, I believe that it's time, and throughout, being so far away from Austin, you know, we've never really had the access to services that other people have, public safety to address Commissioner Perez's concern is, with the support from the judiciary, El Paso has reduced its revocation rate by 22%, second only to Harris County, which the county funds a lot of their ancillary services, so working collectively as a community, we've been able to have a huge impact on public safety, we do have the lowest revocation rate, so this is just something else that is going to be able to be dedicated to those justice-involved individuals with very serious and persistent mental health conditions, of many other issues that they have, so we agreed that in order for us to launch this pilot, and to make sure that it's successful, we also can't be at the mercy of public health or available monies, so the first thing that needs to be in place for any mental health court to work is access to care, and that would be doctor time, that would be medication, those are the fundamental components of any successful program, and in turn, would increase safety, and in turn, would also reduce the cost, because incarcerating a person with only one medication, I'm sure Wally and the sheriff can tell you how expensive it is, so this is a diversion program, so instead of incarcerating somebody, we're going to treat them in the community which significantly reduces the cost.
Thank you, Maggie.
And I'm going to stop talking now.
Thank you. Crystal, any comments?
I don't want to restate the obvious, but, you know, this programming is essential, as Maggie and the judge have mentioned, we've worked for several years, and as a system, we've increased the services and, that are available to individuals involved in the, on the justice continuum that have mental health, and so this obviously would help on a very specific intercept, as the judge mentioned, those cases where they otherwise might not be served or find challenges being served, with our in-kind staff, they'll receive behavioral health supports, also working with other social determinants, housing, or linking them to appropriate housing, linking them to substance abuse services that obviously they need, and with those individuals, should they have coverage, third-party coverage, we'd be able to bill for that coverage and help kind of reduce some of the costs, or it would cover some of their medications, so, you know, there's a window there that would help with those services, so just wanted to bring that forward.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
Thank you, all this in-kind is just so valuable, I mean, this is, it's inexpensive if you look at it, compared to everything that's going to be taking place.
So then, so then you'd need to amend your motion, Judge, if we want to do what Commissioner Perez was talking about, asking, I mean, asking for the amount in the grant, and if it's not received, then we...
Right, so if we could have two motions, the first motion is for item number 22, which would be to approve the establishment of the Mental Health Court, so if you want to take up that one first...
And authorize the resolution?
Right, that's for item 22, and then we would take up the separate motion for 23, and we'll clarify on the record what the court's desire is once we get there.
Okay, so I'll second the judge's motion on 22.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanigo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
So on item number 23, it's already been read into the record, if the court would like to authorize the, approve and authorize the Court Wellness and Recovery Treatment Program to apply for the Governor's Specialty Grant, you would be asking to increase the amount to the $172,000 plus the $67,910.
So move.
Second?
Before the court votes on it, I just want to clarify, and then, it doesn't have to be part of your motion, but then what staff will be doing is, as part of budget, will be bringing up a contingency, if we have not heard back on the ruling of the grant, bringing up a contingency to fund anything that's not funded through the grant application.
So we'll prove this, what Betsy just said, as far as the, we're going to put it in the budget?
We'll put a contingency in there for it, if the grant is not awarded in full.
For FY 2021.
Okay.
Caesar?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanigo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Judge, thank you, thank you, all of you as well, thank you.
Item number 24, approve and authorize the 384th Adult Drug Court Program to apply for the Governor's Office Specialty Courts Program in the amount of $182,988 from September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021, no county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution, contract number 2020-0150.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Morales Caro, and I work with the Adult Probation Department under Maggie.
Good morning.
And we're here to request permission to apply for the 384th Adult Drug Court Grant, it is a grant that we ask for permission to apply through the Governor's Office, it does employ a counselor that is a county employee, it's a master's level counselor, and it also funds a licensed chemical dependency counselor that works for the Adult Probation Department, it partially funds a supervision officer as well, and we pay for the difference, additional officers as well, so we have two officers in that court, it has no county match, and last year we served 110 drug court participants that are in the program for a minimum of 18 months, and we did have 29 graduates.
Move to approve?
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanigo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you, good luck.
Item number 25, approve and authorize the DWI Drug Court to apply for the Governor's Office Specialty Courts Program in the amount of $172,800 from September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021, no county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution, contract number 2020-0163.
Good morning, Judge, and good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Judge.
Thank you all so much for allowing us to be present, and to be with you, the essence of this grant, and seeking your support, is to expand the services that we are providing for the longer-term individuals that we also treat, for the most part, our program has been dealing with folks who have misdemeanor DWIs, felony DWIs, and of course, we work with the federal government, and so research has told us that the more I have them in a structure, the more I have them accountable, the more I have them in treatment, then the better success we have for those who have received a longer-term sentence, and since our program is approximately 15 to 18 months in a phased-type program, and they graduate, then once they graduate, rather than placing them on regular supervision, they would stay with the program to maintain that accountability and structure that we have been giving them while they've been in the program, and extend that for the remainder of their term, so that we can continue to have our public safety, that we can restructure their lives, and also that we're gathering data, gathering data to help us continue to change the way we deal with this population, and so as I've come to you over the years, I think we've done a very good job about doing that, because our recidivism rate is very low, so the fact that these people would come into the system is very low, and I think that's great for our community, and we're very proud of that, so part of this grant would be to have at least a person now that could coordinate the efforts, and also have the probation department have an officer dedicated to this population to continue, and of course, the utmost would be to continue the continuum of care, which would be some treatment, and so therefore we are asking for your support in this matter, to continue the program and beyond, so that we can continue the fine work that we're doing, and making sure that these people just don't reoffend, because we're dealing with a higher caliber individual, these are the people that have had two or more DWIs and are in felony land, and so, we're very proud to have that next tier, we're trying to create that tier in the program to continue our efforts with the longer-term people.
Excellent.
I'm open here for any questions you may have.
Move to approve? Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanigo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very much, and I think I'm here for your next items.
Item number 26, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the Governor's Office Criminal Justice Division, fiscal year 21, commercially sexually exploited persons' court program funding opportunity.
Judge and Commissioners, this population and this program, you know, even though mandated, has been a very, very difficult program to get going, only because of the population, and we're dealing with people that have been exploited, we may be dealing with people that are human trafficked, and so the creation of the program, when we started, had somewhat a good impact, I'm not going to say it didn't, we had individuals that were arrested and charged with these offenses, and we certainly implemented a lot of good work, with the good work of treatment, with the good work of probation, and our local partners, and so we were able to rehabilitate and change people's lives, because these are people that are really mistreated in a way, charged with prostitution offenses, they're trafficked and everything like that, but it just never got the legs that it needed, and so when they mandated it, it also had a provision where it would impact the probation department, which would not be a county department, because it's a state department, so I'm not sure that it's never been impacted, so to make a long story short, we ran the course of trying to make this program actually work, and so we talked to many partners, we talked to law enforcement, I think probably Commissioner Leon would probably know that this population was very difficult when he was chief, because usually what happens is you have transient people, sometimes, of this population, they're here and they're gone, the statute is created to where they could probably receive time served, and they'd be gone, rather than going through a program that was essentially a nine-month program, I will tell you that Mr. Esparza actually offered them a good deal, if they completed the program, the case would be dismissed, but it just never really gathered the strength and needed to continue, the governor saw fit that they would not fund it because of that reason, however, it's come up as an issue again, and so I think what it needs is maybe a waiver right now, it needs some time to be studied, as to how we're going to be able to continue, rather than be impacted and punished by way of not receiving funding, not receiving department, better word, in other words, let's not impact departments because we can't make a program work, if we're going to make a program work, then I think it needs that study, it needs that effort by all parties, including law enforcement, and others in the treatment field, that if we're going to be receiving these individuals into these programs, then we study it well, and we did, but the governor saw fit not to, and so it is a mandated program, I think it's a much-needed program, I will be here to stand with you amongst others here in this community that says that, you know, we need to help these individuals, as we need to help many others in all these courts, for some reason or another, this one just has a very difficult time. So we're here probably just to say, let's ask for a waiver, let's study it, let's come back to you, and we can ask, and create it to where we've studied it well, and how we're going to make this plan work efficiently, and I'll certainly mind not heading it up again, I think we had a lot of success with a lot of people, I will tell you, I ran into two of these fine ladies just recently, and one of them just started her business, the other one, I actually confirmed their marriage, and they're doing very well, so we do get to impact a lot of these folks, but we need some time to really study this particular program a lot better, and I invite any other members, Erica's been very, very helpful, I know she's been under the gun to get this, because there's always deadlines, see, I'd rather not come to you and say, let's just do it because we need to meet a deadline, let's do it because we've studied it well, and I think the program would do well here in our community, I think we just need that time, we certainly don't want to have our probation department impacted in any way because of this.
Erica, you have any comments?
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Erica Ortega, I work with Grants Administration, so yes, I have been discussing with the judge that it is a mandated program, based on our population size, the county's population size is greater than 200,000, however, we did discuss this, I was made aware that it's a mandated program in very late January, by the time we had consulted with county attorneys, got their opinion, revisited, we realized that we wouldn't have enough time to put together a sufficient program in that amount of time, at that point, we had probably weeks to prepare this, so it is my recommendation to hold off and request a waiver, a formal waiver from the Governor's Office, I know it's been mandated since 2015, we did have a program from 2000, was it 15, through 2018, yes, and I know our funding hasn't been impacted at this point in time, I think if we just communicate with the Governor's Office and let them know that we've had this program in the past, we plan on applying in the future, and really plan for a successful program, I think that they'll be okay with the waiver.
That was my question, whether the governor would see this as not so favorable that we're asking for a waiver?
I think it's understandable, I think if we communicate to them that maybe we've had difficulties in the past with the program in terms of measures, outcomes of the program, I think this is perfectly fine, I think, from their end, I think they'd rather us plan a great program, and really plan for any obstacles or struggles that we'll have during the program, so I think they'll be okay, I think, from their perspective as well, if we implement a program that's not going to do well in terms of funding being spent, that may hurt us in the future if we decide to send funding back at the end of the grant period.
And I thank you, Judge, for, it's almost like an ethical move of saying, are we ready or are we not ready, should we just get it for the sake of getting it, and so that's very much appreciated, that we're being as honest as possible going forward, so, any questions from Commissioners?
Yes, I agree with Judge, thank you, Judge, Judge Anchondo, as far as being practical about the matter, as far as you having a program just to have a program, or you have a program that's going to be successful and beneficial to our community, so I applaud you for coming forward and making that statement, you know, that you're being honest about it, you know, whereas I know in some of my career, that people would just say, let's just do the program, let's see, we can put on our resume and say we had this program, but what was the success of the program is the key.
Well, the key here is, when you have two fine young ladies like this who prepare these documents, they're constantly asking the questions, and I have to constantly come up with some answers, I think that what we would be more proud of is to have a successful program, and not just have a program, as you stated, Judge, that we come here before you every year, annually, and tell you the successes that we're having with these programs, and I think right now, this one just needs a little more work, and we just need to get with our partners again, and probably re-energize the batteries again, but when we do, at least we've made a well-thought-out plan, and see if we can continue with that.
Thank you for that, move to approve?
And if I could just, and the motion would be, just so we have it correct on the record, it would be to approve and authorize the Grants Department to submit a letter requesting waiver to the Office of the Governor to apply for its Criminal Justice Division Grant for FY 21 commercially sexually exploited persons' court program, that would be the motion.
Christina, just, I know you and I went through this, you know, orientation that you gave me, but in, let's say that they, we get a letter back, sort of, say, no, it's a mandate, we're going to have to move forward, do we need anything to get ready for that, or?
No, I mean, what the legislation requires is that the Commissioner's Court apply for the grant, and I guess when you see you apply for the grant, there's an understanding that a program would be forthcoming after that, here, what the court is hearing and what has been brought before you for consideration, is a good faith argument to say, we're just not ready yet, we're not saying no, we've brought this to your attention, we have had it before in the past, we're trying to figure out how we can move forward successfully to do that, and so there's been instances in the past, is my understanding, that we have requested a similar type of waiver, I don't believe, also based on Ms. Ortega's comments as well to this court, that it really is that good faith argument that the court is putting before the Office of the Governor, and so that's all documented via this motion and via the discussion that we had today.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So do move to approve? Do we move to approve?
Second. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for your time.
Judge Nchondo, were you here for Judge Dominguez's presentation?
I was.
Oh, just wanted to, if you warrant that he used your court as a benchmark, and so that's one more favorable thing what you and your team do for our community.
I think that all your courts that are here before you are doing great work.
I agree.
And I think that the community can only say that we're just doing the best we can to restore some of these folks and do the best we can so that they're not in the criminal justice system, but actually out there doing some good things. We're very proud of that from all our judges and all the teams that are in these programs.
Thank you. Thank you for your service and your team.
Judge Dominguez will recognize. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-seven. Approve and authorize the Planning and Development Department to apply for the Texas Department of Transportation Federal 5339 discretionary award, fiscal year 2019 bus and bus facilities program funds for fleet grant in the amount of $274,779 from September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2022. No county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the certificate of obligation. Contract number 2020-0145.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Jose Landeros with the Planning and Development Department. These discretionary grants that are funded through the Texas Department of Transportation are part of our ongoing commitment to continue to replace and update our aging fleet for transit. As the court is likely recalls, we have updated nine buses through this program over the past few years. The application before you today is for an additional two buses to update them to CNG vehicles as well. There is no county match required, given that the Texas Department of Transportation, or TxDOT, has utilized transportation development credits to meet the match to the federal government on behalf of local governments. And so that's one of the benefits of the partnership that we've continued to form as we expand transit service through the unincorporated areas of the county. With that, as for the court's favorable consideration, happy to take any questions the court may have.
Move to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon has stepped out of the meeting. Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-eight. Approve and authorize the Planning and Development Department to apply for the Texas Department of Transportation Fiscal Year Twenty, Federal Transit Administration Section 5311 Rural Areas Public Transportation Grant in the amount of $363,462 from September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021. No county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the certificate of obligation. Contract number 2020-0144.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Again, Jose Landeros with the Planning and Development Department. The 5311 program is the routine program that the Planning and Development Department seeks funding for its ongoing operations of the fixed route transit system throughout the unincorporated areas. So this is the application for fiscal year twenty, which expires at the, or fiscal year twenty-one, excuse me. And again, similar to the last item, there is no county match required. The state's use of tax transportation development credits meets the county's match requirement for that. With that, we would ask the court's favorable consideration. Happy to take any questions.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon is absent. Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-nine. Approve and authorize the Planning and Development Department to apply for the Texas Department of Transportation Federal 5339 discretionary award, fiscal year nineteen bus and bus facilities program funds for facilities grant in the amount of $224,000, excuse me, $224,000 from September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2022. No county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the certificate of obligation. Contract number 2020-0146.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Jose Landeros with the Planning and Development Department. Ditto on everything I said for the previous items. No county match required. This 5339 program is the discretionary program. Something that I would like to add that I didn't add for item number twenty-seven is that the grant is for fiscal year nineteen. And so the reason why it's a year behind is because the FHWA or Federal Transit Administration released funds, and TxDOT as a whole goes after those funds. And then at that point, they secure the funds and then make that funding available through a competitive grant or discretionary program to other agencies. So we do not go after the large grants the state does, and then the state makes those funds available. We have greater success securing more funding that way and because of the fact that our transit operation continues to expand and serve our residents very well. Like in last year, we had an increase in ridership of 27%. And so it's unheard of really in the state. And so that puts us in a very advantageous position to continue to secure funds through the discretionary program. Item twenty-nine is specifically for the design of fifteen bus shelters. The court recalls two weeks ago approving some design and construction for additional shelters and benches, and this is part of that. There's an additional fifteen shelters that need to be funded for design, and that's what this item is for today as well. So similar to the previous two items, no county match required. We would ask for the court's favorable consideration. Happy to take any questions the court may have.
Move to approve?
Second.
I think Commissioner Robinson brought up something a couple of weeks ago in reference to the city's disposal of some of their bus shelters that they had. I don't know if you discussed it while I was gone, but has somebody called the city to see if in fact they're available? Is it not a good idea?
We can coordinate with them. What the funding that we've secured thus far has been, it's to fund a brand-new facility. It's to fund the design and installation of these new facilities. But what we may do is, once we finalize our TTI study, which is gonna tell us exactly where we should be placing bus shelters and bus stops in the areas that were not identified in this first round of installation, we may wanna potentially utilize local funds, or Sun Metro's willing to donate this to us and repurpose them along our routes. That may be an option for the secondary set of bus stops and shelters to be installed along our routes.
So over and above the grant, this would be additional?
Right, that would be over and above. But because this grant does have the same rules and regulations and stipulations that other federal funding has, the use of a new facility is what would be required because the state's giving us that funding. But to go above and beyond what is presented here, we may also have the option of doing that with any surplus items that Sun Metro may identify.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing it up. But the reason I bring it forward is as far as the time is of the essence. You know, they bring in the new systems, with the Brio. They're doing away with, they're taking out the old ones. Now, there were a lot of areas that did not have shelters at all. But I've seen some shelters that belonged to Sun Metro that are somewhere else now. So I'm saying, let's get in contact with it now. If we don't put them in place right now, we can acquire them and we have them available to us before they dispose of them and give to someone else.
Yes, sir. And once the study is completed by TTI, we'll know exactly where to put them. We'll have a document that identifies where the need is for the placement of these shelters along our route. So there'll be a methodology as to where they're placed, which is needed, which there was not before.
Well, I'll say this. It's better to have it than not need it, and need it not have it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Jose.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jose.
Item number thirty. Approve and authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office to apply for the Governor's Office First Responder Mental Health Program Grant in the amount of $51,120 with a grant match of $12,780 from October 1st, 2020 through September 31st, 2021. If awarded, the county match will be appropriated in the fiscal year twenty-one budget. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution and victim services certification. Contract number 2020-0161.
Good afternoon, Judge. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Here today for the First Responder Mental Health Grant. This grant is kind of different in a way that we are asking to get peace officers, detention officers, and civilian officers, or, I apologize, personnel untrained and certified in mental health, so they could come back and assist the department in reference to problems that officers themselves may be having through groups, committees, and meetings. We feel that it's a lot easier for maybe an officer to talk to another officer and open up. Once a problem may be identified, that person then could be forwarded to more professional help.
Move to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirty-one. Approve and authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office to apply for the Governor's Office State Homeland Security Program Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Activities Grant in the amount of $128,853 from September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021. No county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution. Contract number 2020-0169.
Good afternoon, Paul Sory again with the Sheriff's Office. And I apologize, I didn't mention that first time. We are asking to go ahead and ask for funding for our SWAT team, which would include breaching tools, body-to-body cameras, I apologize, microphones, night vision goggles, and the throw box kit.
Motion to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirty-two. Approve and authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office to apply for the Governor's Office Criminal Justice Program Grant in the amount of $181,116.80 for two handheld narcotics analyzers and the purchase and installation of a county courthouse surveillance system from October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021. No county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution. Contract number 2020-0159.
Good afternoon, County Judge, Commissioners. This grant that we're applying for is for two handheld narcotics analyzers, which allows the officers to scan, I believe, up to about 500 controlled substances with a definitive result. And that's pretty handy when it comes to any kind of patrol issues that they may have. Also, the courthouse security received a report from the Texas Office of Court Administration in which they made recommendations as to how to improve courthouse security. And one of the recommendations was a camera system. We need to add more cameras to our existing system. And the quotes that were given, I believe, address cameras on, I believe, three or four floors, where we don't currently have very good visual of certain areas. And so these cameras would help us enhance our existing system.
Motion to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirty-three. Approve and authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Unit to apply for the Governor's Office State Homeland Security Program Regular Projects Grant in the amount of $210,85. To purchase mobile radios from October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021. No county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution. Contract number 2020-0157.
Good afternoon again, Judge, Commissioners. Paul Sory again with the Sheriff's Office. This is a continuing, I believe, the sixth year of this radios grant. We are asking for the $210,000. And I believe, I had heard Commissioner Robinson in the past, and as well as all the other Commissioners know, that as best we can, we stagger for the end-of-life. So not all the radios are dead at the same time, or not all the, whatever it comes to end-of-life at the same time. So we do try to stagger this grant throughout the years so that the end-of-life, our staggered, we're not really demanding all these radios at once.
Move to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I want to commend you for these grants, and thank you for pursuing them. They're just so important in our community, and you guys really go out there and try to do the best. The no-match is always very favorable to here as well. So thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much, Judge. Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Judge, if I can, Wally from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy also likes to throw a shout-out to the grant team. The month of February has been a crazy hectic month with all of the applications becoming due, and they went above and beyond to help out our departments.
They do amazing job for us, and it makes our budget look a lot better than having to spend money on those items. So thank you. Thank you, Erica.
Item number thirty-four, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number Nineteen to the County of El Paso's 2019-2020 Operating Budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $7,048, thus increasing the overall budget of $474,616,425.59
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. The backup for this week's budget amendment was included with last week's highlight. Were there any questions regarding this week's amendment?
Motion to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us to item number thirty-five, Executive Session.
Before we head into executive session, though, I need to read a legal memo. So for item number thirty-five, we, you are posted to discuss under 551.072 contract negotiations with Life Ambulance Services, Inc. for services in El Paso County. I need to read this legal determination memo. And it's that, as your legal advisor, I've determined that deliberations in an open meeting concerning business and financial issues relating to the negotiations with Life Ambulance would have a detrimental effect on the position of the Commissioners' Court in negotiations. Thus, I am requesting that the court unanimously vote that deliberations in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the court, and that all said deliberations take place in closed session. I would further request that the court direct the county clerk to ensure that all proceedings in these closed sessions be recorded, and that would be your motion. So I just need someone to move to approve that, as stated.
Yes. Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
A copy of this memo will be provided to the court.
Thank you.
This brings us to Executive Session, item number thirty-five. Commissioners' Court will recess into Executive Session to discuss items thirty-five A through thirty-five E pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0725 and 551.071. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabians Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabians Street in Fabians, Texas 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online! Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119 or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process,
Judge, at this time, would you like to go into executive session?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 35A through 35E pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.0725. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Road and Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas 79838; The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas 79835; And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online! Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas". Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contract in return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
...